Welcome to this ATT session. And it's my pleasure today to welcome three speakers whom you know, you might know well, you know, they've been quite very well involved in the process already. It's an ongoing process definitely as you can see. Today we will address bringing ATT into force. Well, as you know, you know, entry into force is might be the easiest part of the journey in the sense that entry into force is looming ahead probably by the end of this year with the 50 threshold very likely to be passed, you know, at the end of September on the occasion of a dedicated third joint deposit of ratification instruments. So yes, ATT will enter into force soon. We will have the 50 ratifications necessary. Then there is a entry into force on paper and there is entry into force on the ground. And we know that, you know, entry into force on the ground might be maybe the more difficult part of the of the journey. We will need, you know, effective implementation capacities in the states parties. This is definitely a challenge implementing this treaty, those carry resources implications. We would like this treaty to be as universal as possible, in particular, you know, gathering countries that are most relevant to arms trade. And as you know, many of those are still outside the ATT community, they haven't even signed the treaty. So these are definitely challenges that will have to be tackled if we want to move from entry into force on paper, from entry into force on the ground. And to address that today, I'm very happy that we have three talented speakers. And we'll start with Ambassador Eden Charles from Trinidad and Tobago, who will speak for 10 minutes as other speakers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Despite jet lag, I hope I am able to do justice to the topic. Entry into force is multifaceted and it goes beyond what is stated in the four corners of the treaty. Permit me, Mr. Chair, to thank the organizers for inviting me to participate in this event and for including matters relating to the Arms Trade Treaty on the agenda. While the focus of the event has largely been on the need to enhance cooperation to prevent the proliferation of weapons of mass destruction, either through legally binding agreements such as the NPT, the CWC or other arrangements, I cannot escape referring to the comments made last evening by our dear friend, Ms. Angela Kane, the United Nations High Representative for Disarmament of Affairs, who indicated last evening that the illegal trade and misuse of conventional arms, not nuclear weapons, are responsible for hundreds of thousands of deaths associated with armed conflict globally. And in my region, the Latin American and Caribbean region, it is linked to the narcotics trade and other criminal activities, including gang-related violence, which is affecting the sustainable development of many countries in the Latin American and Caribbean region in particular. Mr. Chair, the adoption of the ATT is in no doubt one of the most significant developments of treaty-making by the United Nations since its inception. For the first time, the international community has a legally binding instrument which establishes common global standards for the transfer of conventional arms, including small arms and light weapons, in accordance to the relevant provisions of the ATT, which was adopted by the United Nations General Assembly on April 2, 2013. To date, as we would know, 118 states have signed the instrument and 45 of them have ratified, including my own country Trinidad and Tobago. It is expected that during the high-level treaty event to be held on the margins of the United Nations General Assembly on September 25th, about two weeks to come, two weeks away, we would have reached the milestone of the 50 states required under Article 22 of the treaty for its entry into force. Consequently, 90 days after the deposit of the 50th instrument of ratification, the ATT would enter into force. If all goes according to forecasts, the international community would have a Christmas Day gift with the entry into the force of the ATT on December 25th, Christmas Day. But, Mr. Chair, are we prepared to derive the maximum benefits of the treaty? The ATT, as we know, is not a disarmament instrument and at the same time is also not solely an agreement to regulate the trade in conventional arms, but if implemented efficiently and effectively could prevent some of the gravest breaches of international humanitarian law and the human rights law, which we have been witnessing and continue to witness in all corners of the globe, in most areas I should say. Forums as this consortium are important to elaborate on measures that are necessary for the entry into force of the ATT. I'm proud to say that civil society has taken the lead in organizing workshops and seminars, sometimes in partnerships with governments, including one hosted by my own government of Trinidad and Tobago in June of this year. These mechanisms are attempting to ensure that states have the requisite legal and other machinery in place in order to sign and ratify the ATT, which are prerequisites to enable its entry into force and eventual implementation. At the same time, Chair, as stakeholders, it is imperative for us to agree on measures which were either left out of the text of the treaty or not sufficiently fleshed out due to the need to reach consensus during the negotiating conferences on the ATT. This is what we are aiming to achieve when we meet in Mexico next week, as we move towards agreement on a number of measures prior to the convening of the first conference of parties, which could take place as early as the middle of next year in accordance with Article 17 of the ATT. Chair, as you know, the ATT, as is the case with most other treaties and conventions, is silent on the rules of procedure to govern conference of states parties. These rules are critical to making decisions on both procedure and substance, which will affect the operations of the conference of states parties and, by extension, the full and effective implementation of the Arms Trade Treaty in the future. We, as an international community, as signatories of states parties, need to determine whether we borrow from existing practices found elsewhere, for example, from disarmament treaties, human rights treaties, the rules of procedure of the United Nations General Assembly, or whether we invent new rules having regard to the multiplicity of issues covered under the ATT. It is hoped that all of these questions would be answered during the meeting in Mexico and other meetings which would be convened before the convening of the first conference of states parties. If the work is done, Chair, states parties would be in a better position to achieve the object and purpose of the ATT, which are stated on the article one of the treaty provides as follows. The object of this treaty is to establish the highest common international standard for regulating or improving the regulation of the international trade in conventional arms, prevent and eradicate illicit trade in conventional arms, and prevent their diversion for the purpose of contributing to international and regional peace, security and stability, reducing human suffering, and so on and so forth. Mr. Chairman, the entry into force of the ATT would also require states parties to fully honor their obligations, which they have undertaken, and not pick and choose which ones they seek or they desire to implement. The negotiating history of the ATT shows that it was an exercise in compromise-making in the interest of the entire United Nations membership. For these reasons, states parties upon entry into force of the instrument are expected to implement all of the obligations under the treaty, including Article 6. And I'm speaking here about states parties, whether manufacturers, exporters or importers. Article 6 instructively, Chair, deals with prohibitions which all states under Chapter 7 of the United Nations Charter are expected to follow. And the Article 6 provides as follows: A state party shall not authorize any transfer of conventional arms covered under Article 2.1 or of items covered under Articles 3 or Article 4 if the transfer would violate its obligations under measures adopted by the United Nations Security Council acting under Chapter 7 of the Charter of the UN, in particular arms embargoes. And the article goes on and goes on. To continue in the same vein, states parties must show themselves to be exemplars to other members of the global community with regard to the transfer of conventional arms and must also discharge their commitments under Article 7 of the treaty, which was also a hard-fought provision after late evenings and early mornings of negotiation. As a result, under Article 7, exporters will be required to refuse to transfer arms when they use their assessment if the arm transfer is after assessment could be used to undermine peace and security, commit serious violations of international humanitarian law, or facilitate serious violations of international human rights law, among others. These obligations under Article 7, Mr. Chair, flow from instruments such as the Geneva Conventions, the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court, and other instruments which concern international humanitarian law and international human rights law. It should be noted that in accordance with the provisions of Article 23 of the ATT, a number of states have recognized the importance of the provisions of Articles 6 and 7 and have decided to provisionally apply these articles pending the entry into force of the Arms Trade Treaty. Mr. Chair, during the negotiations as well, diversion was singled out as a major contributor to the supply of conventional arms to non-state actors and others who benefit from loopholes in the international arms trade, to the disadvantage of hapless victims of crime and armed conflict. The implementation of Article 11 on the prevention of diversion would assist in promoting international peace and security if states parties carry all the obligations relating to diversion. It is respectfully submitted that in the same way that voices advocate for the nonproliferation of weapons of mass destruction, they must also denounce illicit arms trade, which is also due to diversion from the legal market to the illegal market. The entry into force of the Arms Trade Treaty should also make operational the mechanisms relating to international cooperation. This is an important tool in the implementation of the treaty, as not all states possess the adequate machinery to implement its provisions. The secretariat established under Article 18 of the treaty is anticipated to play an essential or pivotal role in assisting states parties in their effective implementation of the instrument. The preparatory process leading to the entry into force of the ATT would also have to address the somewhat imprecise language in certain parts of the article governing the secretariat if states parties are to benefit fully from this provision. If all of the work is left to the first conference of states parties, Mr. Chair, we stand the risk of disagreement on key issues germane to effective implementation, and this cannot be afforded because it would delay enforcement of action that could reduce the incidence of armed conflict and armed violence. After all, Chair, it must always be remembered that the ATT is also about saving lives. Finally, with regard to the location of the secretariat, it is no secret that there are a few states which have longed their bids to host this important body. I would urge all gathered to look very respectfully at the bed of Trinidad and Tobago to host a secretariat, which we believe would be in keeping with the principle of equitable geographic distribution and location of international bodies and so on. We also feel that having regarded discussions in the negotiations, this venue in Portus Plain would be one of the most cost-effective venues. Specific details of the offer have been submitted to states parties through our missions either in Geneva, New York and elsewhere. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Ambassador. The floor is now to Mr. Sanye Adamu from the ECOWAS Convention to follow on with the more regional perspective. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to also join my colleague to appreciate this conference, especially the organizers of this conference, for inviting ECOWAS into this discussion. And particularly to also say that we are going to speak to the topic within the context of our region, so that I will take you into a journey, you know, down the line in terms of getting to anticipate the kind of implementation challenges that probably the ATT would begin to face, you know, in the course of time. Like the earlier speaker said, we are at the threshold of getting the ATT into force. And as soon as we get the 50th instrument deposited, the ATT will be there into force. And after 90 days, we also know that full implementation will begin. But I would like to quickly go into my presentation by saying that the ECOWAS member states have actually demonstrated strong interest right from the beginning of the process by actively participating in the diplomatic conferences during the negotiations. And this, their participation actually was motivated by the massive awareness-raising campaign that the ECOWAS Commission mounted within the region. This sensitization campaign also accumulated into the adoption of a common position within the region. That actually helped in the negotiation process. You remember, most of the voices from our region during the negotiation process were common voices. We were all there and we spoke, you know, in the same direction to be able to get the ATT in place and to also agree with some of our major international partners. The ECOWAS Commission also facilitated the consultations, the continental consultations by our member states, so that, you know, we have this strong participation during the negotiation process. The ICRC, International Committee for the Red Cross, also partnered with ECOWAS Commission to be able to support our member states to not only attend the diplomatic conferences in New York, but also to sensitize them on the instrument that we are trying to promote. In terms of adoption, signing and ratification of the ATT, I'm happy to report to you that all the member states in the region have signed off to the ATT. And so far, four of them have actually ratified to date. And while the other member states are gradually, you know, putting in place the processes towards the ratification of the instrument. Now, the ATT, what does the ATT portend for West Africa? The ATT is seen as the first step, the very first step, but a decisive and significant one, towards reducing human suffering, we all know, which is being caused by the unconstrained threat in weapons around the world. The treaty also signifies, you know, the control. As soon as the treaty comes into force, it will now signify the control of illicit trafficking of these conventional weapons, which currently we know is poorly regulated to the extent that international markets of staple foods are even more restrictive than the market in conventional weapons. The prohibitions, as soon as also the ATT is enforced to prohibit, we all know, the transfer of conventional weapons to states and organizations that engage in terrorism, organized crime, genocide, crimes against humanity and other gross violations of international human rights and humanitarian laws. The human cost, like you all know, of lack of this control is that our region particularly is disproportionately, you know, bearing the human cost of this all-regulated arms trade, you know, having suffered the majority of deaths in terms of armed violence. Talking about armed violence, you all know, the ECOWAS region has been inundated over the past decades, you know, with lots and lot of armed conflicts. And recent investigation has revealed the human cost of these armed conflicts, which most of us here are aware, in terms of huge military expenditure, the health cost, and the reduced in productivity of most of our member states. During this period, you all know, many people were killed, men traumatized by gun violence. However, at this point, we are glorified, we are glorified to say that the ATT is here and has come to stay. However, the advent of the ATT, we all know, has risen a lot of hopes in our region because arms trafficking will give way certainly and eventually will have peace and security, you know, to a reasonable extent in not only our region but around the world. And but the important and significant thing that we want to stress is that the implementation of the ATT would depend on how, you know, these member states are fully capacitated to be able to effectively, you know, implement the instrument. These challenges are endemic in the region, and these challenges could be seen from, you know, multi-dimensional perspectives. Firstly, we have a number of our national laws that are outdated, the challenges within the stockpile management systems are also problems that we need to contend with. The absence of database and small arms register is also a problem which we need to contend with. The porosity in terms of the management of our borders, it's one significant challenge that certainly when the instrument is enforced, we need to begin to anticipate a lot of challenges there. And lastly, the diversions, problems of diversions, even before the entry into force, the ECOWAS Commission, as you know, has a small arms convention in place. We have had in the past reported cases of diversions of even official stocks that were given approvals to be imported, there were incidences of diversions. And these diversions could be seen from, you know, several points in the transfer chain, during exports, during transit, also when an importing state receives the stock, there are incidences of diversions there during delivery to the end user, even after importation, and so on. So this incident of diversions have several incidences that have actually taken place. But the good thing that I want to really stress is to say that as this prospect within the ECOWAS region, because of the existence of the ECOWAS Convention on small arms and light weapons, the convention has actually provided the platform for the effective, eventually for the effective implementation of the ATT. Because most of the provisions of the convention are, you know, to some extent also related to some of the articles of the ATT and would certainly be able to, you know, implement the ATT effectively. And of course, when these challenges are also attended to, because when the challenges are there, the implementation will not be as effective as, you know, will be done in other regions. So it's important that we emphasize on international assistance, international cooperation, so that member states within the region are provided with the required support to be able to implement the ATT. The earlier speaker have said it all. The ATT must be seen to be implemented, you know, globally. And if the ATT will make the difference, this global implementation is key. A region like the ECOWAS region should be seen to be part of this global movement in the effective implementation of the ATT. So these are some of the concerns of the region, and these are some of the issues that we want to put on the table. The entry into force of the convention is important for us, and the ECOWAS Commission is also up and doing to be able to support and to accompany our member states towards the effective implementation of the ATT. This intervention, in terms of getting our member states to implement, will only be possible if, you know, the support process within the package of the ATT is also, you know, extended effectively to all the member states. At this point, Mr. Chair, I would like to stop here during the question and answer session to give more, you know, insights into what we are doing. I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adamu. And now the floor is to Ms. Jessica Hent from the UK Foreign Office. Please, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending this event today. I want to just quickly talk about, a little bit about the context of where we are and maybe throw out a few practical issues that will then spark some discussion. For those who've been involved in this process of achieving the Arms Trade Treaty, and for many, it's been a lifetime's and certainly a career's work so far, I think you can cast your mind back to a time when many believed it would never happen. It has now happened. We have a treaty in place. So those who wanted to believe it wasn't going to happen now are believing, well, we can't make it work, can we? Well, for those of us who have supported and worked on this process all along, I think it is our responsibility to make it work, to give it substance, to give it credibility. When the treaty was ratified by the United Kingdom on the 2nd of April this year, our Foreign Secretary at the time, William Hague, said, and I want to quote this because I think his words were very specific and very appropriate, "This treaty will help make the world safer by placing human rights and international humanitarian law at the heart of decisions about the arms trade. For the first time, countries have agreed international rules governing everything from small arms to warships. If these rules are implemented globally and effectively, they have the power to stop the arms from reaching terrorists and criminals and fueling conflict and instability around the world." I think that is what we are trying to achieve, and we must remember that. So our task as the treaty enters into force is to ensure that these factors remain paramount so that when implemented, the treaty can deliver the expected step change in the rules-based international system governing conventional arms controls. And to achieve this, we now need to set a clear path towards and a framework for implementation. And I think there are a number of interlinking factors, and this is what I want to throw out to you to start some debate. I'm going to talk a little bit about vision, direction and priorities. I want to put out some thoughts about structure and process. And inevitably, I think I have to say something about funding. So let's start at the top, vision, direction and priorities. We need to be ambitious. This was and it is an ambitious treaty. We need to maintain the vision of a safer world through control of weapons stocks and weapons flows. To be effective, we need to attract states that are and have been skeptical about the treaty. We need to establish and maintain robust rules and support the rules-based controls that are already in place. But we also need to be realistic. Those who were involved in the negotiation of the treaty will remember there were a lot of red lines, and those red lines differed for different people. As we put the treaty into force, we need to remember those red lines. We want to overcome them, we want to resolve them, but we don't want to inflame them. If the treaty is to be credible from the outset, it cannot start by reopening old arguments. It must start by focusing on what we have in common and only coming on to those more difficult issues in slightly slower time, and I say slightly slower time, so I'm not putting them off indefinitely, but at a point where we have built some cohesion but at a point where we have built some cohesion and some momentum. And let's remember that we have six years before we can adjust or change the language of the treaty itself. So there is time to explore our differences and to build coalitions and consensus. And I think ultimately what I'm talking about here is the reputation we want to build for the treaty from the outset. We want it to be effective, we want it to be dynamic and we want it to be progressive. We need to keep focused on the positive, what it can achieve and what it is achieving. Because we want to keep states signing up and ratifying until we have that truly universal support for the treaty. Then it can become really effective. So it's a two-stage process. It's, it's a dual track, if you like, and we must keep our focus on both aspects. So as this treaty comes into force, and we hope that this is going to be our challenge from 2015 onwards, we need to start thinking now, and indeed, we're going to start discussing in Mexico next week, items, structures, structure and process. How is this going to work? What do we need to make this treaty effective and to deliver its objectives? Previous speakers have both touched on some of the aspects. We need to decide on the secretariat. Mexico is already doing a valiant job on a voluntary basis in, in starting the process. Mexico has indicated it might be prepared to become the interim secretariat. But what do we actually want the final structure to be? What's going to be its size? What's its composition? Do we want something that is lean and efficient? Do we want something that is staffed by technocrats, people with expert knowledge of the issues? Or do we want a group of effective administrators? Or do we want both together? Added to that, what do we want as a head of secretariat? The person that heads this group must complement the staffing so that we have a range of skills, a range of levels of engagement to maximize impact. And I think if I am going to give a view on these issues at this stage, I'm going to say that from our perspective in the UK, we want to stress quality over quantity. We can find the right people to, to staff a lean secretariat with a small number of, of bodies, but we need to find the right people. We can find a good head of secretariat with the relevant skills, but it needs to be the right person. And that process must be carefully thought through and rigorous. As we look forward as well to the First Conference of States Parties, we appreciate it must be well-prepared. As I've said, Mexico and indeed Germany are both offering opportunities for us to start that preparation. But when the process becomes formal, and let's remember, at the moment, it's informal. We don't actually have the ratifications in place for the treaty to enter into force. We hope that by UNGR, by the, the September meeting in New York, we might actually get there. And if the, if the NGOs have got anything to do with it, we will. At the moment, what can we do informally to, to start putting these, these necessary structures in place? And I think the most important thing we can do is have open and honest and constructive discussions. For those who are going to Mexico next week, come with your ideas, let's put them on the table and let's see what works. We need to think about things like the process. Are we going to have the ATT operating by consensus? Some would say yes, it's a, it's a lovely objective, it's a lovely aim. But there are many bodies that operate by consensus and find themselves blocked as a result because they can't achieve anything. And they are frustrated by that. So maybe we want a principle of consensus with a mechanism to unlock deadlock or unlock certain issues if they become deadlocked. How do we build in that flexibility? That will read across into things like our rules, rules of procedure. What do we want to guide us? How do we want to regulate ourselves as we form this process? And also issues like reporting. How much bureaucratic burden do we want to put upon ourselves? And as somebody who feeds information into a lot of reports in a lot of fora already, it is a bureaucratic burden. What do we want to require ourselves to report in order to show what we're doing and what we're achieving without overloading ourselves so that we can't actually get out there and do the real work of, of encouraging more people to abide by the treaty itself? And I think those questions take us on to the inevitable and painful question of funding. Again, there are many options. None of them are easy, none of them are ideal. I think we can all point to different regimes and different structures which are funded in different ways. We are all living through times of fiscal constraint, so there is not much money out there to spend. So whatever we put in place needs to be cost-effective, affordable and sustainable. I know that there are reviews taking place at the moment of funding arrangements within EU organizations. There are some studies taking place, I believe, in Geneva to look at what will work and what may not work. All of this needs to influence our thinking. And I suppose the obvious choice is between voluntary contributions or a mandatory contribution scale. Both of those have implications. Voluntary contributions, people may not put their hands in their pockets. And if that is the case, you will have a, a secretariat that will spend all its time going round urging people to contribute funds. And that's not what the secretariat is there for. A mandatory contribution scale, well, could put a disproportionate burden on some states. And let's remember that as an embryonic structure, the ATT will only have a limited number of ratifying states. Therefore, the burden is shared amongst a small number of, of countries. And therefore, the burden is greater for them. So the implications in the short term and the long term also need to be considered. I'm not going to go beyond that and I know we're going to have these discussions over the coming months as we, as we move towards the implementation of the treaty and entry into force. But it's going to be a difficult task, a challenging task. But as I said at the beginning, it is a task we must embrace and we, we owe it to ourselves to deliver and to deliver effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Indeed, for the presentations and to the three speakers, I think that we had a good reminder of both the, the expectations placed into the treaty, the decisions to be made in the, in the near future so that, you know, we can live up to those expectations. So I think that we had nice overview of, you know, the content of the treaty and the preparatory process not towards entry into force and the First Conference of States Parties. So I think that there's a lot to be decided, there's a lot of options. And there might be also a lot of questions from, from you. So now we have time for, we have a good half an hour for questions, answers, comments. So the floor is yours and please introduce yourself when taking the floor. Yes, sir, please. Can you speak louder, please? Yes, sorry.
...............................................................................................................
Maybe we can take up a few, let's say, three, four questions and then we will let the speakers answer before, you know, readdressing possible questions. So please, thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Ellie Gudamaki from Tatum House. I had just a couple of, well, thoughts or questions. The first one is quite sort of specific and a bit nitty-gritty and it relates to the holding of the First Conference of States Parties. As I think Eden mentioned, the treaty requires it to be held within a year from the entry into force. Now, I know there's been some discussion as to whether we should try to do it as soon as we can after the entry into force or as late as we can after the entry into force. And I was wondering whether any of the panelists would have any ideas or your opinions about what the, the different factors that come into play with these different scenarios are. And then I also had a sort of a more philosophical or a wider question which relates to the entry into force and the, the following implementation. I remember when we started the Race to 50, I was, I guess, one of the conservative ones who said that there is no way that we're going to have it enforced this year. And I hope that I'll be able to eat my hat in Christmas dinner on the 25th of December. Because it's been, I have to say, the speed with the ratifications have come in has been quite remarkable. Yes, I said, I, I hope we'll have the first 50 by 2015. But what then is my question, what I was wondering. I'm already hearing some campaigns about Race to 100. Is there something you see in the pipeline? And if so, half jokingly, how long do you think the Race to 100 will take? And more, on a more serious note, what are the actions that you think we should put in place after we have the treaty to encourage broadening the participation?
Thank you very much. Maybe one last question before answering.
Ah, yes, okay. Thank you very much, Monsieur le Président. I would like to also thank the speakers for, for their presentations and interesting information and challenges and questions that, that, philosophical questions that, that we heard. I would like to make point on, on the ratifications. We believe in Slovenia that, excuse me, my name is Yerma, I work for the Ministry of Foreign Affairs from Slovenia and I work with, with Pierre-Arnault, Monsieur le Président, in the Coarm Working Group. I would like to say that issue of ratification is very important. It is, the illegal trade with conventional arms is globally issue. So we, we believe that we need a wider geographical spread of ratification. The fact that we have 21 new member states out of 45 is positive for us, but for the future of the treaty, we need to, we need to, 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 to spread geographic scope. So I would like to ask Monsieur Adamo and Ambassador Charles to, to just to, what, what is the situation in your respective regions, in Africa and in, and in Caribbean? Then I would like to have just maybe a couple of comments on, on, on funding. It's, it's true that we are all in fiscal, in, in fiscal dire straits, but we believe that some, some sort of combination, we, we need some sort of combination of a mandatory scale, UN scale of assessment and, and, and voluntary. I mean, we can, we can discuss hours, but we have, let's say, different cases, international committee. We have good experiences, bad experiences. But relying on voluntary is not good. While on the other side is also, the other side is also not good that if you rely only on, on, on mandatory. So some sort of combination should be found, in our view. And on, on, on reporting, reporting is indeed very important and we will have to invest enormous political energy and to convince countries, state parties to, to, to report. The, the, the present situation, international relations is not very positive in, I mean, in arms, arms control in the summit. If we go through different regimes, instruments, we see that, that normally it's more than 50% of, of states that report. If you go UN Register of Convention Arms, there rarely that we have 80 countries out of 109. We have, if we compare to, to different conventions, there are around 40% people that, that, that will, that, that report regularly. So in, in our view, reporting shows the vitality of each instrument. It will be very important to ensure what we have now, these templates that we have to adopt, this ATT baseline survey, I think is a very good beginning. But perhaps in order to, to, to get more responses, maybe should be a little bit simplified. But it's good, in our view, it is, it is, it presents some, some base that we should build on. And of course, we, we fulfilled in our, for, in our case. Thank you very much and excuse me, I was wrong.
Thank you very much, Bastien. So maybe we can answer those questions before getting new ones. So shall we start with ladies first? Jessica, please.
Okay. If I briefly just deal with the points in order, the possibility of an EU contribution to funding, very possibly. We will need to discuss that. The ATT is a regular issue on the Coarm agenda. And I think as we move through this process, the, the issues that are discussed in that forum will become more specific. The EU is already providing support for helping countries in the process towards signature ratification and implementation. So the precedent is there on that side. But whether the EU will be prepared to move towards some sort of more formal funding for structure remains to be discussed. On timing of First Conference of States Parties, I think I would say do it when we are ready. Yes, we have a year's window in which to do it. I think from the UK perspective, we have no strong preferences for sooner or later. We want it to be well-prepared because we want it to be successful. I think one other factor to consider is we don't want that timing to conflict with any other major event. So we don't want the thunder, the, the brouhaha of this first conference to be eclipsed by anything else that is already scheduled. Now, it may be eclipsed by something we can't plan, I hope not. But certainly, let's not put it up against something that's already exists on the calendar. Entry into force, the Race to 100, more ratifications, a huge task and it must be kept as a priority task. I think one of the most important things will be constant communication. As we have the treaty entering into force, let's make sure that there is a strand that puts out information about what it is there for, what it is achieving and what it can do. Also, the lines of assistance that we hope will flow from this process as well to help countries in that process. Ratification, the wider spread, yes, we very much from the UK are trying to work with, through the Commonwealth Network, for example, to encourage a broader range of ratifications and signatories. We hope to have those come in fairly rapidly. We do appreciate that for a lot of countries, this is a very slow process. It's a very complex process. We were very lucky in the UK that we managed to put a lot of groundwork in place in advance. And that meant as soon as we knew that the process was moving, we could push it forward. But again, we appreciate that for other countries, other issues take precedence. And I think funding and reporting has already been touched on. I value your comments and I think that's, that's room for further debate.
Thank you very much. So from the left maybe to the right, Mr. Adamo?
Yeah, thank you. The specific question to, to me, I think it's related to the ratification within the ECOWAS region. I'm happy, like I earlier said, to report that we have so far four countries that have ratified. And all the other member states are in the process of ratification. You know, the, the, the challenges within the West Africa region is the consciousness of not only the citizens but also the, the political actors. I'm happy to say that UK, the government of UK had provided some funding to the West Africa Action Network on Small Arms. It's a civil society network, it's a regional civil society network for, for, for mobilization of not only the people but also the political class of West Africa to be able to move into the process of ratification. So there were quite a number of activities related which once are conducted to be able to conscientize the parliamentarians particularly so that the ratification will be fairly, you know, speedily considered. And also technically, from the point of view of the ECOWAS Commission, we are in discussion with the European Union within the 11th EDF, European Development Fund, who have set out a discussion and are factoring the implementation of the ATT within the 11th EDF. And this approval provisionally has been given. So as soon as the, the contribution agreement is signed, we'll be able to have sufficient, you know, activities towards supporting our member states to ratify, not only to ratify the ATT but also to implement key priority, you know, articles of the ATT. So even within the ECOWAS regular budgetary arrangement, we have quite some support activities. So even within the ECOWAS regular budgetary arrangement, we have quite some support activities that will help member states to not only ratify, but also to implement the key activities within the ATT. Like the earlier speakers have said, honestly, the global universalization of the ATT is key. If a region is left out and is not actually meeting up with all the activities within the ATT, we'll have quite some considerable challenges. Like, most of our countries in the West African coast are transit countries, and if in the course of implementing the ATT, the provisions related to our obligations related to transit activities, if they are not met, certainly the implementation would also suffer some constraints. So these are some of my thoughts for now, Mr. Chalmers.
Thank you very much. Ambassador, please.
Okay, thank you very much. With regard to whether or not the first conference of parties should be held sooner or later, my first reaction is that it should be held within the statutory period. We would not support, we, that is, Trinidad and Tobago, would not support any attempt to have it beyond the one-year stipulation. I agree that it should be convened when we are ready, so consequently, that is why it's necessary for us to do the work required in Mexico and elsewhere, to ensure that the rules of procedure are agreed to. With regard to rules of procedure as well, we have seen the use of the consensus model adopted as a sort of veto in the United Nations process, and some people forget, for example, that the rules of the General Assembly also provide for voting. A number of important treaties have been adopted by voting, the Lawless Convention, one of the most universal treaties. So we would hope that in terms of the rules of procedure, we would ensure that as far, for example, as rules of procedure on procedural issues, we would have consensus, and all attempts to, if all attempts to arrive at consensus fail, we would hope for a simple majority. With regard to substance, again, we would strive for consensus, but if consensus fails, we would have a qualified majority in terms of voting. In terms of the Race to 100, and eating your hat on Christmas Day might not be so unpalatable, depending what flavor it is. So we expect to have 50. Within my own region, 14 members of the Caribbean region, seven so far have ratified, making us the second-largest bloc after the EU. We expect by the high-level treaty event, an additional five to ratify. And we are hoping that Suriname and Haiti, which has its own problems, will be able to ratify before the meeting of, the first meeting of states parties. Within the Latin American region as well, which is part of my region, we have seen a lot of work being done, based on what I've been told. Constitutional procedures are more complex in some jurisdictions, and consequently, assistance in terms of the provision of model legislation, for example, for civil law countries, could be shared with others to ensure that there is no, it may not be necessary to reinvent the wheel with regard to legislation. The NGOs are very good at that, the ICIC in particular. So 100 is not far-fetched, perhaps by the end of, or the middle of 2016, that might be possible. Of course, there's a need to spread the geographical reach to ensure that the treaty is truly a global instrument. However, one would have cautioned is that while we must strive for that, and we would push, we should push hard as states and civil society and intergovernmental organizations, we ought not to be a slave to that. States assume treaty obligations based on consent. So the march of the ATT, which for us is so intricate in terms of saving lives, in the Caribbean region, gang violence, it's horrendous, homicides have gone through the roof in some jurisdictions, Jamaica, about over 1,000 homicides per year, Trinidad and Tobago, 300, we're speaking about small countries. So we don't want to be trapped in this talk about, we need the whole world to be ready before the treaty enters into force. When states are ready, they are ready, and we will encourage, by our example, as I mentioned in my contribution later on, states parties must be exemplars. How effectively we implement the treaty would cause others to be attracted, and so on. In terms of funding, we would not subscribe to voluntary contributions at all as a main means of funding. Treaty obligations, states parties must share the benefits and burdens of treaty obligation. One of the burdens, so to speak, is contributions. A treaty, the funding must be predictable, voluntary obligation, voluntary funding is not predictable. I have sat in the Fifth Committee of the United Nations, for example, the Budget Committee, where non-state parties were members of the United Nations, but not a party to a particular treaty, staff organizations, treaty bodies, for funding. We have no legal obligation to fund, and we are not going to fund, you hear that. And they are correct from a legal point of view. So we would not support that. What we would say as well is that we recognize that in the early days, the burden might be placed on a few countries, but let's find an equitable formula, maybe the UN assess contributions adjusted, to take into consideration the number of states parties could be used, and to fund the core aspects of the secretariat, whereas other aspects which are not core, universalization, getting states which are not able to attend the conference, a trust fund, voluntary trust fund be established to facilitate their participation. Which brings me to the point of, sorry to advertise again, our offer in Trinidad and Tobago for the secretariat is 15 years rent-free. Free video conferencing for five years, and so on and so forth. But when you read, I don't want to advertise too much, but that could affect the funding of the ATT secretariat for the first 15 years. With regard to reporting, we all suffer, developing countries from reporting fatigue. But during the negotiations, we anticipated that, and consequently, you'd find that the ATT provides, where possible, information used under the UN register and all other relevant arrangements, such as the POA, that information, where relevant, could also be used in reporting on the ATT to minimize the incidence of reporting fatigue. I think I would have covered all the questions.
Thank you very much. Good to see that there are additional questions. Let's start with the lady in the second row, please.
Thank you very much, Angela Kane from the United Nations. I wanted to come back to the Race to 100, and I think that what we have seen is that we gathered 118 signatures of the ATT within a few short weeks, basically after the resolution was adopted, and we were all euphoric. And we're now euphoric because we're seeing that the 50 number is going to be reached within a very short time, and the treaty will come into force. But I must add a caveat that hasn't been mentioned here, and that is that Asia is very much lagging behind in signatures as well as in ratifications, and that is very much a concern. China, in fact, voted in favor of the resolution, the Russian Federation abstained from the resolution, and obviously, those are the two large exporters also of weaponry, so therefore, I think that that weakens the treaty if they are not part of it. And it's not only a Race to 100, but it's also like, which 100? I think there needs to be much more of a consolidated outreach politically in order to get these countries to sign up, and to get other countries in the Asian region. Because again, as you said, Latin America, the Caribbean, Africa, European Union have been spearheading this whole effort, and I think that that was very important. And so that's something that we really need to do a lot more consistently. And coupled with that is also the question of the first CSP within the first year after the treaty comes into force, because again, I want to point out that is CSP1 going to take all of the decisions that basically binds the treaty, or is it not? And the way that I hear it, by way of the feedback, is that there is a desire to take all the decisions. But if the decisions are being taken by 50 countries, does that mean that those who join later would like to see changes, then how can that happen? And I know there are provisions, but there are time limits. And so therefore, I think politically, one also has to think about that. And when I use the word politically, the other difficulty that I see is that very often, the ATT is being handled not by the Foreign Ministry, but by the Trade Ministry. And so you have different officials, and the Trade Ministry officials are going to be talking a different language, and with maybe different conventions or considerations than the Foreign Ministry. So I think this is also something that we need to be mindful of doing. Let me come back to the reporting, and I think the reporting is very important. Our Belgian colleague said something about 80 countries reporting on military expenditures and the register. I think that's actually an optimistic figure. We have seen it decrease, and I remember, I think it was last year I gave an address to the First Committee, we actually gave member states those figures. It is voluntary reporting, but let me mention another thing, that even under 1540, which is a Security Council initiative, we still don't have universal reporting. And we must also recognize that the smaller countries who do not have the personnel infrastructure to fill in the forms and, you know, do the necessary work, very often online, are going to have problems with the reporting. It is an additional burden on them, and I think that there should be something where we need to think about, how can we possibly assist in that effort? And we already internally, in the Office for Disarmament Affairs, are looking at, how can we actually look at military expenditures, register, and see, and either merge or do something in order to make it easier on member states to do reporting? Because even for the countries in Europe, let's say, they also find it onerous, you know, to fill in the forms. One other aspect that I wanted to mention, and I do agree on the issue of voluntary versus assessed funding, I think voluntary funding is very difficult to sustain. There is, again, the euphoria of contributing in the beginning, and that's going to drop off, so I am all in favor of assessed contributions to make the secretariat viable and respond to the questions. But the other issue, and I have seen that, and that is true for some of the convention secretariats, let's say BW or CCW, there are voluntary funding is available by member states to add to the program that cannot be done under assessed funding, and that is , to my mind, a very good mechanism. I also want to mention that we have a trust facility that was spearheaded by Australia and was generously supported by the European countries as well, and that's the UNSC, which precisely does functions to assist member states, to enable them to become members, sensitizes, and also looks at other aspects like voluntary legislation and so forth. And I think, again, that is a model that I think has been a very good one, it was a new model in this particular case, and I'm grateful to those countries who contributed to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kane. Cypri, please.
Thank you, Cypribe Bawa from CIPRI. I have two questions, and the first one relates very closely to the point that Angela raised. What do you think are the prospects for bringing in the big exporters that either have not signed, or where ratification doesn't appear to be just around the corner? And connected to that, often it were the foreign ministries that really took the process forward in the countries, and it appears to me that it's often the ministries of defense that are much more cautious and suspicious of the treaty. So how can that constituency in the countries be brought on board? And the second one, regarding implementation assistance, what do you think are the next concrete steps that should be taken in that area, and who should take them? The permanent secretariat, of course, will have a role, it's not clear yet how active, how passive that role will be, but it will be some time until that secretariat is in place. So what are the next steps concretely, not just now, but after 25th December, whenever the Christmas present will appear?
Thank you very much. Mark, please.
Hello, yes, Mark Bromley, also from CIPRI. Just a couple of follow-on points and a question. The issue of funding, I think a couple of people have raised this issue of mixed models of funding, where some aspects of the ATT would be funded by assessed contributions and others voluntarily. It's also here very useful to look at what's happening in other instruments in terms of thinking about these issues. There's been a very long, drawn-out debate in relation to the Cluster Munitions Treaty about how to fund their ISU, and that's generated quite a lot of interesting ideas about different models for mixed models of funding, and they're definitely worth taking a look at. Also, ways in which synergies could be built, perhaps with different UN institutions, in terms of particularly of the hosting of conferences of states parties, and whether or not that could be a way of reducing costs. On the funding, on the reporting issue, it's really going to have to be a very key priority to think about how to build synergies, I think, obviously between ATT reporting and some of the existing mechanisms reporting that states are already obliged to do. Ambassador Charles mentioned the POA and the UN register. You could also think of different regional instruments that a lot of states have to report to, which also cover a lot of the information which states are being asked to provide to the ATT, and thinking about ways that those different reporting instruments can be linked up and connected, and make the formats a bit more similar, so that states can take one report and submit it to another instrument. But then also a note of caution, it is really noteworthy, I think, the collapse, or the fall, at least, in reporting to the UN register. In 2012, only 51 states submitted reports to the UN register, which is the lowest number since the instrument was created, and that was in a year when, I think, arms transfer issues possibly couldn't have had a higher profile on the international stage, which raised the question, is it just about reporting fatigue? Or are states increasingly looking at this information and thinking, this is really sensitive? This is not something I want to put out and get down on record? And so I think we need to look beyond just the question of fatigue, to ask why, why are states been so unwilling to provide this information recently? And I guess the real question I had to the panel was this, thinking about the secretariat. And one way of thinking about how the secretariat is going to work is whether or not states are going to want to have a more active secretariat or a more passive secretariat. Is the secretariat's role going to be to act more as a kind of letterbox for states that just kind of receives the reports that states submit, much in the way that maybe the POA ISS has operated in the past? Or is it going to be more active? Is it going to go out and actively seek information, query states' reports when there's inconsistencies, actively go out and try and actively connect offers of requests and offers for assistance, more in the way that the 1540 Committee has operated? I mean, which model does the panel think they're increasingly drawn towards? Because I think that's going to be something that's going to come up in the run-up to the first CSP. And then finally, a little plug, CIPRI, we've just kind of put some of our thoughts down on paper about some of these issues, and that publication is available on our website and downstairs, next to the reception desk. Thank you.
Maybe, thank you, Mark. Maybe one last question for this round? One last? Yes, please. For this round. Spencer?
Do you think industry has a role to play in, oh, sorry. Do you think industry has a role to play in implementation of the Arms Trade Treaty, and what would you like that role to be? Spencer Chilvers from Rolls-Royce.
Thank you, Spencer. Many questions. So maybe this time we can start from the right? Yes? Ambassador, please.
Some tough ones this time. Okay, I agree with almost everything Angela Kane has said. Of course, I indicated what our preference is with regard to funding. The question of reporting under the voluntary instruments, why we are seeing a continued deficit in reporting, it could be exactly what Mark has said, the question of some states being reluctant to provide sensitive information. We are hopeful that with a legally binding instrument, we would be able to do better. Which brings me to the point of the fact that the ATT doesn't provide for any monitoring and verification regime, which was discussed during the negotiations, but which has not found itself in the treaty. So perhaps some way down the future, we could seek to elaborate a mechanism for verification and so on. Because reporting by itself would not be able to tell the whole story in terms of diversion and so on. I know the NGO community is developing its own ATT monitor, which might be seeking to perform that role. The issue of Asia... The issue of Asia, it's 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 there. I feel greater outreach. But the issue of Asia in terms of treaty making, in terms of treaty participation, we don't see many Asian states parties, the ICC as well, the ICC statute. Political and diplomatic work by states and NGOs could assist. What we have found, and as a member of the G seventy seven and China, we will have to do a little more work with China, that negotiating grouping, because what we have found is that during the negotiations, China was tough. But when it found itself isolated within the group of seventy seven and China, it began to adopt a softer position. That is why it did not vote against the resolution which adopted the ATT. So maybe some political and diplomatic work from the developing country grouping, which is called a group of seventy seven and China, could be enhanced. The issue of Ministries of Foreign Affairs versus Ministries of Defence. The issue of treaty implementation and administrative issues as far as treaties are concerned are up to sovereign states. States will make a decision as to whether or not it would be the Ministry of Foreign Affairs or the Ministry of Defence or export agencies will 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 deal with this aspect of the treaty as we get to implementation. I believe countries have looked at, have have taken a second look at the ATT and recognized that it is not as weak as it seems, although it isn't as strong as we want it to be, and that is why they might be using other ministries. But I think the question is not whether which ministry is, as I said before, when state parties begin to implement, other states will be looking at how effective state parties are implementing, and they may use that as a as a as a guide in terms of their own participation. Of course, as Mark said and I indicated in my presentation, we need to look at elsewhere in terms of the drafting of the rules of procedure, where elsewhere other bodies do not fit the ATT, because it is a unique treaty. We would have to invent as we go along, but hopefully, we will not have to invent everything. In terms of the secretariat and what role the secretariat should play, whether the secretariat should play a role in universalization. The promotion of the treaty, most treaties, is generally done not only by political means, that is by political heads and diplomats and so on, but by the the president of the Assembly of State Parties and so on, or the director generals of these institutions. But the question is whether or not, as we approach the first conference of parties, whether states would want to to give the secretariat these additional powers. Having regard to the imprecise language in Article eighteen about adequate staffing and and so on and so on, it is now left up to state parties to determine how far we go, recognizing as well that under Article eighteen three E of the treaty, which deals with the secretariat, state parties could give the secretariat additional powers. Whether that is done at the first conference of parties, I don't know. With regard to the question as to whether the first conference of state parties should make all the rules and whether that it would affect participation by others, I'm not sure. I would say, let's see how it goes. When state parties, future state parties, enter into an existing arrangement, they enter the arrangement accepting what has transpired before. So I don't think we should deliberately set out to adopt a minimalist approach to, because we do not, we do not want to scare off potential state parties. Let's see how it goes, what we are able to achieve at the first conference of state parties, what has not been achieved could be delayed. With regard to universalization as well, our view is that the conference of parties need not necessarily be held solely at the location of the secretariat, but could be spread among the five recognized geographical regions of the United Nations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ambassador.
Oh, sorry, one thing, on industry, sorry.
Yes.
I think industry has an important role to play. When one looks at the provisions of exports and so on, I think industry would have to work hand in hand with governments. Industry would know the export market better than the governments and so on. But it's the governments which are legally bound to implement the provision of the treaty. So there has to be an approach where the the views of industry are taken into consideration in the implementation of especially the provisions of Article seven on assessment in terms of whether we should export or transfer if it's to violate IHL or Article eight. But industry's participation must also not be at the expense of the the faithful interpretation of the object and purpose of the treaty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hadem?
Yeah, but for me, it's just one question, which I think Madame Kane asked. The big powers, the big exporters of weapons, we all know the rising influence of China in Africa. And China is having multifaceted bilateral relationship with a number of our countries. And if they are not within the framework of the ATT, certainly will have considerable challenges in the long run. So it's my appeal that all efforts should be made to be able to bring these big exporters, and even India, one of the biggest importers of weapons, within the framework of the ATT. This is just my appeal, Mrs. Chah.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Hen?
I'll just touch on a few of the points that stood out for me. We'll work backwards. Industry, yes. Industry, as far as the UK was concerned, was a major information source as we worked through the treaty negotiation process. But I think I I see two roles for industry. One is informing government and having that dialogue about what helps and what doesn't help. But I think there's a there's a more public role for industry, is is showing what the treaty means for them. And showing primarily that the treaty is not an impediment to successful business. And I think that also reads across to some of the issues that have been raised about signature and ratification. I think there is still a perception that this treaty is is somehow creating a cartel for the big arms producers and the big arms exporters. That is not the intention. The intention, if we use the the British phraseology, is to create a level playing field for arms exporters and arms trade, but a well-regulated playing field. And I think it is important that business communicates that in its own network as well as more publicly to reassure people that that this is not some subtle mechanism to support certain aspects of business or certain nations' business. It is actually to make the world a more responsible place. In terms of signatures and ratifications, yes, Asia is a huge gap. China, we have had various conversations with, and there is indication that there might be a bit of movement, but we can't guarantee it. Russia, we would love to see signing up. I don't think this is a great time to be talking to Russia about these issues, or maybe it is. For once, I think I would hold the the UK up as a bit of a model when we talk about the differences between Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Ministry of Defence, Ministries of Trade and Commerce. In the UK, those three, plus our customs service, talk all the time about arms export control issues, because we see it as a continuum. It's it's about regulating, it's about facilitating business, but it's also about controlling and holding to account. I will accept it is not always an easy conversation, but it is always an informative and constructive conversation. I also appreciate that that is very easy for us to say, because we've been doing this for years. It is not very easy for a lot of countries where particularly issues of national security and national defence are treated as state secrets, and therefore even within government, those those dialogues are difficult. But I think our experience is, it's worth trying. It's worth trying to knit up those various parts. They are all important to informing these issues. And lastly, and the falloff on reporting, I've I, it's an interesting question of why has suddenly have people stopped reporting or slowed down in their reporting? I think there is an element of bureaucratic fatigue. I think also there is an element of overstretch. The world has suddenly become a much busier and a much more contentious place over the last year or so. So I think resources are diverted elsewhere. And I think there is a slightly philosophical question behind this as well. If you have a reporting mechanism, will people be held to account? And I think some states still fear that if you report things, then somebody will come along with a big stick or a red pen and give you marks out of ten, or say you're not doing well enough, or you should be doing more. We do need that, but I think we need to be clear about what the purpose of reporting is, and is there going to be, you know, that the some sort of enforcement afterwards? Or is it just for the sake of transparency and accountability and getting people into the habit of sharing this sort of information? So I think maybe put yourself in the mindset of those who are cautious about providing these sorts of of details.
Thank you very much. And on my side, and briefly, what do you can do regarding the future? Well, I think it will very much depend on the final structure that will be retained from the secretariat and its funding. But so far, there's an example for those of you who are knowledgeable about the BTWC. As you as you know, the EU has funded projects implemented by the BTWC ISU, for instance, which has resulted, you know, in one project manager hired by the ISU to implement, you know, additional projects. So this is something that, for instance, could work well for the the future ATT secretariat, whereby if you want additional staff could be, you know, provided by EU funding for dedicated projects under, let's say, the AGS of voluntary, possible additional voluntary funding. But this is for the for the for the future probably. For the present, I would say that, that was the question from Sibyl, do we have to wait, you know, a permanent, well-working secretariat to wait for, you know, implementation assistance? Maybe not. At least, you know, you might be aware that there is an EU implementation support program which is available currently, and I have here a little leaflet that. I would be very grateful if you if you could, you could have a look. Please feel free to take one. This is already in place and already available to, let's say, provide implementation support to a certain number of countries. Then regarding the secretariat and how passive or, you know, active it could be, I have no, I have no clue. Of course, future will tell and will depend, well, actually, on the, if you have a look at the wording of the treaty, the treaty says, you know, the secretariat shall assist member states, state parties towards effective implementation. This is quite far reaching, at least, you know, regarding the the size of the task. At the same time, you know, if you compare, for instance, with the Vasner secretariat, which is, let's say, a secretariat well-staffed, well-funded, within a group of like-minded countries, there are reporting requirements under Vasner, and so far, you know, even with, let's say, well-functioning secretariat, even there, you have reporting difficulties and reporting gaps, despite, you know, what the secretariat can do. So I would say, you know, against this background, that it's better to have reporting requirements, let's say, realistic from the very beginning, instead of relying of, you know, instead of relying on a secretariat to redress it afterwards and to help, you know, towards reporting compliance, because this is definitely very difficult, and I'm not sure that, you know, a secretariat has the authority or the resources to 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 support, to to support this, especially with many more countries than the Vasner arrangement. On the industry role, yes, definitely, I hope that the industry will be, will play a huge role. Export controls will remain national. Industry generally, you know, operates on an international level, so I trust that for you, it's going to be important that, you know, countries tend to use, you know, comparable or even identical export control lists that would help in the supply chain, that, you know, you have some consistency. So hopefully, you will be very consulted. In particular, you know, when it comes to implementing provisions of the treaty that are, if you want, open to some creativity, like on transit and import. The point is not, you know, to maybe to to control each and every transit, you know, with prior licensing. The point is maybe to better control what has to be controlled under specific circumstances. And I hope that the industry will be consulted in this in this regard as well, which many countries have, I believe, a very strong interest to do the same on export control list, you know, so. Because the expertise is as much within the industry as within, you know, authorities in this in this regard. Thank you. Unless you have one very urgent, very important additional question, which we could possibly take, then...
I have one question.
Yes, please.
My question was about, it's picked up a little bit by what I was saying, which was on the the role of the regional regional organizations and how they how they will interact with the ATT process once it's, once it's been ratified, once the treaty's been ratified. And part of that might also be a solution in terms of making sure we keep up the momentum at the regional level. We talked about Asia maybe slipping behind, bringing in maybe some of the Asian regional organizations as drivers for the momentum of the ATT going forward. And the second thing was the challenge function of those organizations which helped us get to where we are today. And I'm talking about industry, I'm talking about the NGO sector. I think there was a brief, I think Eden mentioned briefly about an ATT monitor that the NGOs, how do we ensure that those those that sort of challenge function from from outside continues and keeps up the momentum and the interest so that part of the general strategic communications for the ATT going forward globally, to make sure this is, this stays in people's consciousness, is to have all of that working in a seamless way? That was my, that was my sort of observation question and solution.
Thank you very much. Who would like to answer this quite quickly? Ambassador, please.
Well, in terms of regional regional organizations, during the negotiations, an attempt was made, a valiant attempt, but we did not succeed, to have regional organizations be included and the regional organizations becoming a party to the ATT, whether it's the EU or Karikam and so on. China stoutly resisted that and be willing to upset the apycat. I mentioned China because they were most vocal on this particular issue. Notwithstanding that, we see the role of of regional organizations as being very important. We, that is Trinidad and Bogo, we have used the Karikam secretariat to assist us in the hosting of of regional workshops in Porto, Spain, even before the ATT was adopted, and it has proven useful. Regional organizations could be a good sort of clearinghouse, sort of bringing together best practices, distribution of material to some states in a particular unit, region, which might not be similarly circumstance. The ATT monitor will play an important role. It will seek to fill some of the gaps that the treaty doesn't provide for, and the treaty may not provide for in the in the not too distant future. Verification and monitoring is important, and universalization, universalization is also important, and civil society is in a position to do that much better than governments, and they have shown to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hadem?
Yes. In addition, like I earlier reported, the ECOWAS Commission, for example, we supposed to accompany our member states to effectively implement the ATT. And it's within this consideration that we put in place the majors to be able to discuss with our strategic development partners. And like I said, the EU has given provision within the ten, the eleventh EDF to be able to support the implementation of the ATT. Not only that, we have partnership with the ICRC. We had several sessions, you know, bringing all the member states, the key, you know, stakeholders in the member, in within the ECOWAS member states. And in the process, on pact, we were able to unpack all the articles of the ATT in order to conscientize them, to sensitize them as to the challenges ahead, challenges of implementation, challenges of reporting, and all the other related obligations. So I think the regional organizations are having, they have quite significant roles to play, even though they are not within the the framework... to play, even though they are not within the framework of the ATT, but independently it's our responsibilities and we'll have to be seen to be carrying out such responsibilities. For ECOWAS, this is what is obtainable and we'll continue to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two very brief comments. I think one, it goes back to a point made earlier, use the synergies. Use the synergies between the regional organizations and any other organization for that matter that can support what the ATT is trying to achieve. And I think a similar point in a way in relation to NGOs, industry and others, use the expertise and don't be afraid of the challenge, because they will challenge. From a government perspective, NGOs, business do ask for things and challenge points that are uncomfortable, but it is always helpful, it is always valuable to know the other perspectives and to force ourselves sometimes to take a new approach.
Thank you very much. Well, we are already late. Hopefully that was a refreshment break to, you know, let's say, keep us a bit longer together. So thank you very much to the speakers and also to the audience for the numerous questions. So thank you very much and enjoy the rest of the day.